We will hold meetings order. We have Cynthia with us virtually today. She's on our Zoom so she can follow along and we can make sure to check in if she has questions and get any information from her. So I will turn it over to you, Dr. Saban, for your presentation.
And it's actually going to be Doug Morrison giving us a presentation here in just a minute, so I will set it up for us. This is kind of to put the bookend on the current strategic plan. And there's been lots of really great work that's happened over the last three years. And so we want to just do kind of an overview as kind of a last pass to see where we're ending up, both with some of the metrics and just some of the big work items that have been involved. And this will serve as kind of the springboard to the conversation that we'll have on the 12th at our retreat and trying to kind of look at what we think are possible priorities for next year that we then use in January, February, whenever we kind of establish some dates for some listening opportunities with our community, with staff and with students and with community members. And so we'll talk at our retreat about kind of the methodology of that and look at actual calendar dates and things and facilitation. But I always think it's good to do a good review so that we know where we're ending up, and then we can start to project ahead. Some of the things that have been worked on may carry forward and may have a different or new emphasis on it. Some of it may be that we've got it kind of worked into the fabric of our district now and it doesn't need to be a district priority. And some of it might be new things that we want to bring on board. The other thing that we've talked about that we want to do moving forward is really think about that continuous improvement cycle and how we determine what are the things, we've referred to it as anchor metrics, what are the metrics that we're going to watch all the time, no matter what? Those things are probably going to be largely connected to the work of district departments and our school level improvement plans. We're referring to those kind of as PDSA plans, that Plan Do Study Act model. And we'll be doing some work of kind of revising some of the formats that we've done with school improvement planning, with department plans. So we'll be able to provide the same updates on those metrics, but they'll be directly tied, as they have been in many ways, to those building and department plans. Then we'll have the district priorities of the things that we set some indicators of progress for maybe program redesign or some new initiatives so that we'll track those as our priorities. And throughout the year, we'll do updates on our progress. And then when we come to the completion of that year, we'll say, where are we with this initiative? What do we need to do for next year? What do we want to bring on as maybe another priority? And what do we want to keep and continue to move forward with? The discussion that we'll have at our retreat on the 12th is, do we move into this kind of continuous improvement cycle rather than putting firm dates of where we're going to start these things and we're going to be done and then we have to do this new thing? And so I think we kind of talked about the value of that continuous improvement mindset as opposed to stopping and starting, so we'll kind of flesh that out a little bit more. So Doug has prepared kind of the wrap-up and we'll go through this. We'll also have this document available as we kind of review and talk about it on the 12th. And I'll be providing just some context on things leading up that to board members in preparation for some thinkabouts and preparing for that work on the 12th. So with that, I will turn it over to Doug to present.
All right, thank you. Well, you'll see in this presentation really a mixture of really initiatives that we worked on over the 1920 school year and then the data that we were tracking on our external strategic plan indicators over that four or five-year period. So as you're aware, we started in the fall of 2015 and the plan really is running through this year. So this is sort of the year that would encap this strategic plan and as Dr. Saban said, will morph into a new type of plan, whatever that turns out to be. As you're aware, we had our strategic plan broken into four priority areas: student outcomes, school climate and culture, staff, and community engagement. And we've stayed with that for the whole time. Go into student outcomes first, which really think of as student achievement, academics, that type of thing. And you can see the things that we, early on in the strategic plan, some of the thing anchor metrics that we were looking at at the time were strategies. So 1920, here are kind of a recap of some of the major things that we worked on last year. Obviously, in March, things took a turn, but these were the things that we were largely working on and made good progress on a lot of them. And so you have seen the result of these in many board reports over the course of the year. So as we finished these or drew things to a conclusion, they ended up in a board report that you heard along the way. So none of this is really new to you or things that we're working on, but it's really just meant to be a recap. So, you know, just highlighting a few things is, you know, one of the things that we did was we redid the Joe Foss and President's Academy. So we used to outsource that. We brought it in-house, so that was a big item that we worked on. The SIPs, reading intervention at first and second grade level in the eight buildings, was another key strategy that we worked on over the year. We did quite a bit of work with the MAP tool, which is our tool that we assess our students on in elementary school and middle school three times a year. And so we're able to track the academic performance of those students that should ultimately track into the Smarter Bound or the state assessment. And we also started to prepare for the Ben Rife Middle School and Jefferson High School opening. As you're aware, we implemented the new elementary school schedule and we were piloting the junior kindergarten program. And so all those things are well in place and we moved along nicely in those. Some other things that we did under student achievement banner, two-way immersion, we launched that, as you're aware, which was a key initiative for us. We did take a look at the computer science immersion across the school district. And so we took a critical look at that. We, and then we did a lot of curriculum-type work, I call blocking and tackling, that we always have to look at. And actually, I think many of these you're seeing coming up in board reports now here this fall. And then we did pilot some new LMS systems or LMS systems at the middle school. So we have chosen and arrived at those. So, and we also did some, began some other studies of curriculum.
And I'm going to just pause right there. I think any of those initiatives that we're on as study are things that we need to make sure that we come back to and we'll have staff available at the retreat to say, so we studied it, so what's the next step and what's the now what? And we decide either those roll into departmental work or those become part of a potential initiative that we would maybe include. So we'll send this out to you and just take note of those study items for sure.
So some of the key indicators under student outcomes that we were tracking, some of our external metrics, graduation rate was a big one. So we essentially moved that from 80 to 85% over that time period of time. So that was a big win for the district. And we did a lot of that just by continuing to do the stuff that we were always doing, so monitoring freshman credits, looking at at-risk kids, things of that nature. So freshman academies, all those types of things to get our kids to move along. So that was a really strong performance indicator for us. Similarly, with completer rate, which includes students that don't graduate in four years, they take a little longer or they achieve their GED. And we measure that. And you can see we went from about 87% to 94% this past year. And again, one of the major things looking at our alternate high school model. So another indicator that we were able to make substantial progress on. One of the big things is we wanted to raise the graduation rate for everybody. So if you look at that, we started off with a gap in the baseline year of 26% between the kids that were on free and reduced price lunch and those that weren't. And by, we actually closed out in 1819 to less than 10%, but nonetheless, last year we were still able to close that gap to under 20%. So as the whole graduation rate raised, increased, we were able to increase everybody across the board. So another good indicator of progress for us. Third grade reading, you know, early reading is one that we, you know, continue to work through and try to figure out what works best there. And that's one that we had hoped to get to the state average. And it's one that you can see over time, we haven't quite got there. But we are, we've been working with the new SIPs intervention as well as continuing to use the MAP scores and whatever. But primary reading is still something that I'm sure you'll see carry over into the new strategic plan or process that we work on. Still a key item for us. And similarly, we hope to reduce the gap between in the reading scores and really kind of goes back to the previous slide, it's kind of stayed the same. So we haven't reduced that gap over time. Our ELL kids, you know, we track that. Basically, we're measuring here the number of kids that are on track to making proficiency. They have, you know, usually five years to make it to proficiency, a five-year curve that the state gives us. So on the baseline year, when they had re, when they changed the measurement system, everything, we were at 28%. And we've been able to get that up into the 40s the last two years. So that's really good news on the ELL front. And we've been focusing on speaking and writing scores, continue to use the elevation software that we're able to use, and then leverage the WIDA and MAP data additionally for the ELL kids. This is kind of a busy chart, you know? I think we had a goal to try to get to all grades to be at or above the state level. And, you know, you can see the gap is bigger in the early grades and then by the later grades, it starts to flatten out. And in math, certainly, we exceed the state average when we get out here. Interestingly enough, you know, when you look at the district overall and the state overall, when you combine all the grades, the district shows a little bit worse than the state in ELA in math. When you take out the ELL kids, not to make, you know, any excuses, but it certainly does show that when we take our ELL kids out and the state ELL kids out, we're pretty much on track with where the rest of the state is, just to benchmark ourselves. So it's kind of a, I'm just thinking that. ACT scores, something that we also measure. And we wanted to essentially increase the number of students scoring 24 or higher on the ACT. And you can see, we have increased it from out here in the baseline year to this past year, we were able to increase that. It was also our goal to try to keep the number of kids taking the ACT increasing. And we were making some progress, but then this last year with COVID and interruption, I think you saw a board report a few meetings ago, that dropped a little bit. But still something that we continue to focus on, even though the ACT in some national circles is taking a little less of a, just not as many kids taking it at a national level because they're able to get into school through state assessments and other things. AP continues to be a bright spot for us. So our goal is to keep the participation rate up there in the 70% range, and we've done that. But also, at the same time, increase the number of exams that scored three or higher. And you can see we've made nice progress of that over that time period as well. So we continue to encourage participation and offer robust offerings at all of our high schools. Moving on to school climate and culture, which is our second priority area, which is really dealing with safe learning experiences for all and developing a culturally responsive workforce, those types of things. Some of the things that we worked on the past year, we implemented the Project Aware at Whittier. And we actually changed some bus procedures over the year. I think you're aware of that. I can't remember if it was a report, but, you know, putting some clear guidance for what proper bus behavior is, just from the safety of all kids. So we did that. We continue to study the social and emotional wellbeing of our students and staff and what we can keep doing there to make our kids feel safe and included. And one thing down here is we did, if you remember, we conducted the evacuation drill over at Eugene Field, which was a big undertaking for us. And so we were able to do that this past year. Some of the things, the external indicators that we were tracking in the school climate and culture, one was attendance. I can tell you that attendance is a hard one to move. It's almost the 80/20 rule. We can get 80% of our kids to make the 10-day or less benchmark as far as absences. It's the other 20% that's hard to move. And so this one has stayed really relatively constant. We, because of the school interruption, the state didn't measure us. I can tell you through three quarters of the year, we were pretty much in the same range again. So it's just, it's a hard indicator to move, but we keep trying. So we've had the attendance council that we've done in the past. We've, you know, we have the attendance meetings in the schools and we try to focus on it as much as we can, but we just haven't been able to move that substantially, at least to this point. So another one that might carry over into the next plan. Behaviors, you know, when we started the strategic plan back in 2015 and went through this, our goal was to improve behaviors or have less severe behaviors. And so this is a tricky one to measure. We started off trying to measure it just by looking at number of behaviors that were in level four, five, and six, a number of students that had those types of instances. And you can see, the most part, it stayed, it stayed pretty flat. It's another one that's hard to move. So, but we've done lots of things around it. We've done our Bridges study, our, you know, and tried to develop some consistent behaviors throughout the schools, looking at current emotional, social-emotional learning practices. So it's one that we continue to look at. We have a lot of resources decked against it in the schools. And so we just continue to try to move the needle on that as much as we can. Staff, you know, obviously, you can see the highlights of the things that we were trying to accomplish in the strategic plan from a staffing perspective. Some of the things that we were working on, the teacher pathway program that's been started has been very successful. So I think we know the best way to get a more diverse teacher workforce is to sort of grow our own, right? And so that's been a very successful program for us. So, and we also look to create additional pathways for our staff to grow professionally throughout their careers. We obviously are starting to look at staffing levels and training and getting ready for the new school openings next fall and also create additional pathways for our staff. One of the big indicators that we've looked at or that was external for us was just the number of racially diverse teachers, trying to increase that. And you can see we have increased it over time steadily. It's, and so we're proud of that. We know it's a tough one for us to move, but we are, we're trying to move it. And Becca's team has been working hard on that. So just continue to hope, continue to move that one forward. Community engagement, obviously, we want an engaged, informed community out there. So some of the things that we were working on last year were some focused, teacher-focused groups. And we also launched the teacher communication platform. At the time, in 1920, we were using a platform called Blackboard, teacher communication. That didn't give us all the capabilities we wanted, so we've since switched to Remind, which allows teachers to text with the parents. And so that's been something that we're happy about, to increase the level of communication. And then we had a whole, as you're aware, a whole community involvement, feedback, you know, full process around the new elementary school boundaries and trying to keep the community informed about what was going on and so being very transparent about that. So that was a huge item for last year. One of the, the way we measured that is, we went out a couple of years with a survey and Deanna and I, and we just asked schools, number one, do you have a PTO, PTA, which not every school does? But we also said, are you, do you feel supported by the community? So a lot of schools may not have a robust PTO or PTA, if one at all, but they certainly have a lot of maybe church partners or business partners. And so at the end of the day, we were able to, when we left off with this, we felt, most principals felt that their schools were supported by the community. And if they had a need, they could go out to those partners and that need would be met. So, you know, it's just, for schools that don't, again, have a huge PTA, they have great church partners. So we felt pretty good about that, that we had achieved that. And since, we've had a lot of other partners that have come to help. that have come to help. Some other, just new, other initiatives were, you know, the development of the new technology plan, which Ryan and his team completed and I think they gave a board report on that. That was a big undertaking. We're in the process of getting the technology ready for the new middle and high school. And then obviously the new boundaries, that process that we came through was a big initiative for us. And then the year before last, we had implemented a new HR finance system, which was a huge undertaking for the district. And so this last year, we just really studied that and made sure everything was operational in that. So the remaining items that we had from a measurement perspective, I would say are really, were survey-related. So they were items that we were capturing from either a parent or staff or student surveys. And so if you look through some of those, obviously for 1920, since we normally did our surveys in springtime, April timeframe, we didn't go out those, out with those surveys this year. So, but I think what you'll see is that even if we would have, the metrics don't really change that much over time. So you'll see they're very within 1% or 2% over a three, four, or five-year period that you measure it. And I'm sure we'll be looking to do something different this year as far as surveys. We, at one time, were using Gallup and we were going to move that all in-house and we had some surveys ready to go and then we had to shut it down. So, but we'll be relooking at that, what we're going to do this year as far as surveys. I think the key is, we know most surveys, for the most part, you can use the 80/20 rule and the 75/25 rule. It's how do you get at the 20%, though, as to why they're not answering that they're satisfied with something. But you can look through some of these surveys. Parents stating that they had, they perceived teachers to hold their students to high expectations, again, pretty flat over time. Parents surveyed that they feel informed about what's happening in the schools, you know, in that 75% range again. From a student perspective, number of students reporting that they feel safe at school, you know, again, you're in the, into that 80% range. I guess, again, the key is why the 20% aren't feeling safe at school, that weren't. So we have to figure out a way to ask those questions differently to dive into that. And then the number of students that felt that adults were hiding, holding them to high expectations, again, didn't see much change in those over the three years that we measured that. Things that we asked staff. Staff, asked them if they felt safe at school and you can see that's a much, a little bit higher mark, up in the 85% range, but again, it doesn't really change over, over that time period. Number of staff reporting, teachers and administrators have high expectations towards students, again, in that 84, 83% range, doesn't really change. The percentage of employees surveyed that selected a four or five that their opinion matters, didn't change at all over the three years. And that's one we probably need to work on again, is to dive into why the other portion don't feel that way. And then the percentage of employees stating that the district, in building professional development programming, if that was beneficial to their growth as a teacher, again, didn't change much over time. Probably another one to delve into a little deeper or maybe ask the question a little differently, because we've done a lot of work around professional development across the district. And a couple more things that we asked the staff. All, that all teachers and school leaders rate the evaluation process as improving their performance, again, one that didn't change, but is down in the 60% range. And then that the employees will report that they have access to information, that they need to be successful in their job. And that was, again, not much change over time in that 83, 84% range. So that's kind of the, where we ended, kind of show you the trends over the, you know, that, from that 2015 period to the 2020 period. And, you know, again, I think we were successful at some of the larger anchor metrics. Early reading is one that we still struggled with a little bit over time, but all in all, I think it was a good process that suited us well because the, all the board reports and everything that we worked on at district were tied to the strategic plan and then the goals and strategies document that we outlined at the beginning of the year. And I think you saw that discipline over that four or five years, every board report referenced that. So there weren't things, hobbies that we were working on out there at the time. So hopefully you guys have found that beneficial over time. So, so that's the, kind of the wrap-up of the prior strategic plan.
Thank you, Doug. So a lot of work that's happened. And Doug's correct, whenever you have those things visible and you hold to those, that helps you keep from, you know, kind of following the flavor of the day or going down rabbit holes that take you away from your central purpose. And that's something that we want to make sure that we retain as we really look at priorities. It also gives us the ability to be flexible with where we are with those priorities when we're looking at them with that continuous improvement mindset and really looking at, do we see growth over time? And I think those are some of the things, as we look at this, that are concerning where we haven't seen growth over time, whether it's a lower, you know, kind of a benchmark or a higher benchmark, we still want to see continuous improvement. So we'll be talking about that. We've already set some different things in motion as people are looking at planning for the summer for professional learning, planning for some things next year as we look at how we want to kind of dive into some areas of need. We'll talk about that a little bit more on the 12th and talk about some things in relationship to those district priorities that we may set and some things just, of course, organizationally that we're working on already that are tied to these things as well as just some of our structure and how we want to kind of see things through a lens as we move forward. Of course, whenever somebody comes in with new eyes, it's how you see the organization. And the best thing is I have a great team who is very willing to celebrate the successes that we've had as well as look at where do we want to continue to grow. And that's the best thing that you can ask for. And so I'm really pleased with how people have already been eager and really intentional about what we're thinking about as we plan for the future. So that's good. Questions that you have or comments or things that you want to ask about this presentation? Carly?
Cynthia wants to talk before we try this. Go ahead Cynthia, make sure you unmute.
Is your machine unmuted?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I can't hear you. I can hear you, come on. Go ahead.
Awesome. Okay, thank you so much. Although there are some bright spots in our results that we have, we're ready to go when it comes to our very great reading scores and closing the gap in our graduation rates and all things, especially our native American students. I challenge our board and our administration to continue to find pathways to success for all of our students so that all of our students can find success. You will not make excuses for why you have not made these goals, you will continually pursue these goals. Also, something that pointed out, Dr. Staben, which I find interesting because I was not the original strategic plan, but I do wonder if the state numbers is our best benchmark going forward. We might need to look at other benchmarks when we're doing, setting our new goals. So I am really open to exploring that. And I'm glad we're exploring new survey methodologies going forward so that we may fine tune our questions to delve deeper into those core issues where we're not seeing growth. Thank you.
Yeah, great points on that. I think, you know, as school districts, you often look at that state benchmark because that's an indicator of things that are happening. But I also think when we use the MAP assessment, we'd be able to benchmark our district against some other districts of like size, some other benchmarking tools that we may want to bring in. And, you know, full disclosure, my goal is for us to be the best district in the nation. And so that means really being leaders in our own state, but that that's certainly never high enough for us. It gives us an indicator, but it doesn't help us in terms of shooting higher than what that state average is. So that will very much be a focus of how do we surpass any state averages? And I think that's been the goal leading up to this. That's always just a natural indicator. That's how we get the data. That's how the state looks at our data. But I think we have some possibilities there. The methodology for surveying that we've talked about just a little bit is how do we become a listening organization? And so when you send out a survey, people see that survey. Everybody has a perception now about what surveys are and what they do. And what we've talked about in our organization now is how do we do intentional listening? We have really good tools through K-12 Insight. We have the ability to look through a number of lenses. If we ask about school safety, what does our staff tell us? What do students tell us? What do parents tell us? And then how do we look at that kind of as a layer around the same topic? And when we're asking the question, how do we also educate people about, here are the things that we've done to provide a safe environment for our students and staff. Now we're looking to get better. We'd like to know what you think of what we've done as well as what you'd like to see us doing, rather than always just a rating that doesn't give us a lot of context. And then taking that information back when we ask the question again and saying, here's what we asked, here's what you told us, here's what we did with that information, and now we want to keep growing from there. And so really getting into that good dialogue. We can do surveys. We can also convene people. We can listen in a lot of different ways. And so our team is thinking about how do we listen really effectively as well as then tell what we did with what we heard. So when we talk about that methodology, those are some of the things we're thinking about. Other questions or comments?
I think one of the things that is unfortunate is that as much as we don't like to rely on, you know, test score, test score, test score, you have to have something to measure. And so the fact that we didn't take tests last year and then it's really unknown what the rest of this year may or may not look like. I think the plan is to administer them. That would be the goal. But it's hard to measure your progress when your benchmark or your, the goal that you're shooting for is now old and you're not sure where you're at. Obviously, our instructional methods have changed and our environment has changed and so that's going to make it challenging. Some kids will thrive and some kids will not. And so it's, we can identify those gaps in our classrooms and, you know, one-on-one with teachers. But when we look at that big picture, I think that's going to be harder to kind of pick those things out. And so even when we do get data, it's going to have a different perspective. It's going to come from a different place than it has come from before. And so I think that's why it's so important that we have these things that are just embedded into what we do every day, that we know work. And so if we can continue working on those things and making those things better, hopefully regardless of what the environment is that we're in, we're always trudging along and we're always trying to get better and try and help each individual child be successful in what they're doing. So some challenges, I think, for this year and probably next year as well, but not in something that can't be overcome and certainly not a reason to draw our hands up and say, well, when it gets better, we'll set new goals, you know? So I think that's, our responsibility is to just continue pushing and supporting our teachers to do the best that they can with our students. And to Doug's point, getting them to school, I think sometimes is, you know, part of that battle. And so the more we can do that, the more successful we'll be long-term.
Yep. That's a good point, really good point. I'm glad you mentioned that. I think it makes continuous improvement all the more important right now because we kind of have our COVID watermark with us for a while. The good news is we have done our assessments this year with our fall benchmarking. And Dr. Boyson and her team are also looking at our formative assessments that happen along the way so that we have good indicators of what's happening in the interim between those norm reference tests like a MAP test. And then it's, what do we do with that information? Because what we have to be looking at all the time is are our students learning and what's the evidence of that learning? We know that that is going to look different. We missed the boat last spring with our assessments as did most districts across the nation. But now, starting from where we are this fall, knowing that it feels very sloggy this year in some regards, but that we have to keep moving forward. And there are things that we know need to happen instructionally, COVID or no COVID. And so it's how we do that, how we use our time wisely and how we really make the biggest gains that we can in light of everything that's happened. So you're right, assessment kind of takes on a, you know, negative connotation, but we have to have indicators of success with our kids. We also are going to have some really good success stories, I think, because people are really working hard and where kids had some deficits because of lost learning last spring. We're hopefully going to see that in our winter assessment, that kids have really made some phenomenal gains. And so it's exciting to think about the possibilities as well. But thank you for bringing that up. It's going to be with us for a while. Yeah. Good. Other comments or questions? Okay, well, I would just like to, do you want to say something, Deanna? I saw you heading for the microphone.
Do you have any persons wishing to address the board on this?
Say that again, I couldn't hear you.
Do we have any persons from the public wanting to address the strategic plan?
Yeah. I don't believe we have anybody signed up for public comment. I truly want to just give a lot of credit to the people who have done a lot of work, buildings, our schools, our community partners and our district staff, because there have been a lot of things put in place that are really going well and areas where we know we need to refine moving forward. But we have really good, smart, caring people here who care a lot about student learning and care about what happens with our school district. And so we have exciting times ahead. We're very well positioned to go that next leg of the journey, which is exactly what you want to have happen. So thanks for all of the work that's gone into our present data and we're excited to move forward. Any other things related to process or anything coming up? Otherwise, I think that concludes what we wanted to cover today? Okay.
All right. We'll move on to the school board committee reports. Kate, do you want to start?
Actually, we don't have much. We did not meet for policy this month because there weren't really significant changes to the policies that were brought forward. So, and I apologize that I didn't bring them out and bring them with me today, but you'll see those when we get our agenda items for the next board meeting. But again, nothing too significant. Calendar committee, we have our meetings scheduled for December, January, and February. So those are forthcoming.
You make sure you unmute on your computers.
Well, the strategic plan update really was timely. The strategic plan update is so timely with what the Education Foundation is looking at, and that's really around that strategic philanthropic endeavors and how they align with, with the district. And that if we could look at what gaps are to the traditional funding streams, that being namely from the state and local funding, so that they can fund those programmatic or equipment or supplies or additional teaching or coaching or whatever's significant to really coming up alongside the strategic plan for the district and how we can work together and improve the measurements that we're taking. And at the end of the day, that we're serving the mission, that the foundation is serving the mission of the school district in a philanthropic way that goes to improve the strategic that goes to improve the strategic plan. That's really just coming up alongside the current fundraising that's, that's happening and those activities, and where it makes sense to look at the efficiency, the effectiveness with the, from a standpoint of just that continuous improvement. And that improvement in the area of, number one, donor data, that would be receipts from donors, which builds into continued relationship building. Number two, donor retention. Number three, donor interests, and that is what, where, and there may be alignment with the strategic plan and strategic gift giving, bequests, in-kind donations, just that, that continued transparency with paper trails, the receipts, the continued relationships and partnerships out into the community. So we will be looking at that as a, as a board beginning in January. And with that, we approved the operating budget for the foundation. Just by and large, I'll give a quick just overview. 2019, we were at about $196,000. 2020, it was $218,000. 220, or 2021 going forward, sat on the budget committee, we approved a $225,000 budget. The reason why I bring that up is that it's, it's growing and, and, and the revenue side. And then when we look at revenue over expenses, that's more importantly, we continue to see a growth in that area. So it's really exciting. Allison's back from maternity leave. Special thanks to Anthony Pfizer, who stepped in in a very real and critical, critically important way as board chair and in volunteer capacity, to keep things really humming along nicely. Deanna, is Deanna here? Want to thank, special recognition to Deanna, who termed off of the foundation. But Deanna can speak in a very real way, what that foundation looked like under the guidance of being purely volunteer, and then moving that into a role that has a paid executive director, and the growth and improvement, and frankly, really the untapped benefits that that foundation could continue to have to the district. So Deanna, thank you for your earnest efforts and your wisdom that you've brought to that board, and your excellent presentation. Budget. Budget committee. Well, a couple of weeks ago, Todd did a much more in-depth review of really the robust process that he's, he and others have put into place going through our budget. So there's really no updates there, outside of what Todd had already talked to us about. A sports authority, the NCAA, I already told you about those announcements. We also welcomed Dan Doyle to the board. Dan is the current president of the chamber, which makes him one of the board members. Okay, I, I think I've got it.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks for being here, though. Cynthia has some. Do you, are you able to get her on your?
Yep. Hey, should be good.
Go ahead Cynthia.
Can you not hear me?
Now we can.
Okay, awesome. One update on budget is the audit report will be presented at the December 21st board meeting, I believe. And then Chamber has just been gearing up for the legislative session to see what their big items they'll be addressing. They also were involved in, they did do a participation in the mask program to support wearing masks in the community. I did not ask for the mandate, but just asked for the, basically, campaign to encourage mask wearing. The SWP leadership council is still focusing on housing and accessible housing in our community with the new businesses, especially Amazon coming to the community. Teacher of the year, those applications, I believe, are out. I believe in February, those will be announced. And that is all.
Thank you. And Kate talked about policy, and so I'll just do a quick update on insurance. We met and a couple of points. So the $3.3 million expense for the premium holiday, which was the money that we gave back to the employees at the end of November, as that holiday for them to save some money. We also talked about, we're looking at a new wellness plan. And so they did send out some RFPs, and they've been getting some back. We're going to review those in December to see what options we might have for new planning for the wellness plan. And then we have also been participating in a grand rounds program, which is part of the insurance offerings. And so there was a representative that came and gave a presentation on that. And it was just a really interesting way that they can use your insurance to try to target ways that they can help you with your health and wellness. And so essentially, there's all these different programs that you can tap into as a member that can help you to get referrals to physicians. They can help you to get second opinions on diagnoses that you may have gotten. And so they were talking about, we became a customer in April of 2018, and there's actually been 78% utilization rate, most of which were referrals to physicians. So it's them calling into this number and, and asking for somebody who could help them with problem X or diagnosis X. And due to those calls and referrals and usage of the program, we've saved about $620,000 in totals, in total programming savings, just by helping people to find the right person to get to versus maybe having them go to several different people first. And they're looking at some new things with personalized outreach, where they can actually look at some of the claims that you may have on your insurance, and then target you for certain things. So for example, you just had a baby. Maybe they're going to reach out to you to talk to you about some of the wellness opportunities that might be available for somebody who just had a baby. Maybe you added a, another person because you just got married. They might talk to you about some of the different wellness plans that you have available. So just those kind of life events that you might be able to pick up on. There's no charge, no extra charge for our employees to utilize this. And so it really is a great way for people to call and get another person to talk to, that will give you a call back and kind of talk through your scenario and give you different resources. So it was a really interesting presentation that we got, and I'm, I'm excited to learn, you know, more about how we can utilize these and maybe market these to our employees, so that they know that they're available. Because it doesn't matter what we have to offer, if nobody knows how to use it. So. That was the gist for insurance. So I think that that is all of our reports. Does anybody else have anything for the good of today? No? All right. Well, we will, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, signal if you're saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you.